Hey, Don.
Hey, Don.
I saw your emails, so.
Yeah, no problem.
No worries. I know you're busy. You're retired. Uh, he should be.
Yeah.
I think after 5:30. Have you met him yet?
No.
Okay. Oh, that's right.
Are we all set, commissioners?
Yeah.
Commissioners, we all good to go? Yep, alright, great. Well, it is so nice to see all of my colleagues here this evening. I appreciate that everyone is here this evening for this meeting. So I'm going to officially call the meeting of the committee of the whole to order for the Kalamazoo City Commission for Monday, September 15th, 2025. First order of business, roll call. Clerk Borling.
Commissioner Cooney.
President.
Commissioner Decker.
President.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Pradel.
Present.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Thank you, Clerk Borling. Next, communications manager Ritzma.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, okay. Now is the opportunity for public comments. Public comments are limited to two minutes, I believe, at the committee of the whole. If there's anyone here in the chambers who would like to make a public comment on any item of interest to them, please come forward, state your name and whether you live in the city. Seeing no one, we are now jumping into the work of the evening here, and I'm going to turn it over to manager Ritzma in just a moment, but just want to let commissioners know that we also have an opportunity to hear some words from the new president of Western Michigan University, who will be here tonight. It is not 100% certain exactly when he will arrive, so depending on where we are in our strategic vision draft update, we may pause that and let the president say some things and maybe answer a question or two and go back to it, or if it's later, we may finish that, and then that will be the next thing on our agenda. So we'll just watch for that here. I presume that we're tracking the progress of his vehicle at this moment, so. The motorcade, okay. Alright, so that said, we're going to jump into the interesting work and effort behind Imagine Kalamazoo 2035, and I'll turn it over to manager Ritzma.
Well, thank you, Mayor. As you said, it's Imagine Kalamazoo 2035 this evening, and Chief Operating Officer Laura Lamb and our deputy city manager Rebecca Kick are going to co-present the strategic vision draft, so I'll turn it over to you, Laura.
Thank you, city manager. Mayor, vice mayor, commissioners, appreciate your time this evening on this very exciting topic. Before we jump into Imagine Kalamazoo 2035, I do want to take us 10 years back. I want to take us back to a point where we were halfway through a master plan that had about 400 people involved in its development, and we really were experiencing limited results. Then city planner Rebecca Kick comes to me and says, what do we do here? Do we update the master plan and do we hope for a different result? Do we blaze a new trail? Probably no surprise to all of you, we say, let's blaze a new trail. Let's do this. Let's do different. So where did that lead us? We opted to dream big. We opted to dream bold. We opted to engage more community members than the city has ever seen before. We started the Imagine Kalamazoo 2025 process. As some of you might recall, we were not in a great place financially, right? It was truly a leap of faith to say, we know we want to connect and build trust with our community. We want to understand what their hopes and dreams are. We may not have a lot of resources at our disposal, but we're going to be committed to move our resources around to have meaningful change happen. As it so happened, the positive momentum around Imagine Kalamazoo 2025 really helped inspire and lead to the development of the Foundation for Excellence. Little did we know that the conversation starting around Imagine Kalamazoo 2025 would lead to an endowment that is going to fund our community vision in perpetuity. Still gives me goosebumps every time I get to say that out loud. So what was the result? For 2025, we had over 4,000 community contacts help create a new strategic vision, a new master plan. We've celebrated with you all over 100% completion of that master plan and over $50 million of FFE funds invested in aspirational projects. Way too much for us to be able to go through tonight, but I can't help but just go through a couple of highlights. So in this time, we've built, preserved, or rehabbed over 700 homes. We've had no homeowner tax foreclosures in the city of Kalamazoo for the last six years. $11 million has been invested in starting or growing over 500 small businesses. Thousands of kids across the city experiencing free summer camp, enrichment opportunities, training opportunities, youth employment. We've had seven city parks revitalized, over 1,000 trees planted, 20-plus miles of streets that have had traffic calming, 12 miles of sidewalks that helped us expand our network for people to get through our town, and over 11 neighborhood plans have been completed. Here we are 10 years later, and we are building on that Imagine Kalamazoo momentum to get us into 2035. We've had a lot of opportunities to figure out what we've done really well and then constantly reflect on how can we make this better, how can we learn from this process, and ensure that we get to even better outcomes and better celebrations. Tonight, we want to provide you with an update of the Imagine Kalamazoo 2035 process so far. We want to talk about some of the themes and the conversations that are emerging, and we want to talk to you about what are the next steps for us to complete the master plan, the strategic vision, and really chart a course for the next 10 years. The one thing I want to imagine, want to mention, is that we're still talking about draft language, and we take this very seriously. We want to make sure we have ample time to have conversations with our community to make sure we've included everyone that we need to and that we've gotten it right. So as we go through, just know that we have draft all over this, and we're going to continue to rework this until we get it right. Here we go. So this is our timeline, and as you know from our Imagine Kalamazoo presentations, we use this always as tentative. As I just said, we're going to keep working this until we get it right. We've been through the imagine-it phase, the plan-it phase, and we're now in the process of trying to put together that strategic vision, that framework, that drafting document. We will then bring that forward to you as a strategic vision document, and work will become underway momentarily on the design-it phase, really kind of getting into the master plan, getting more specific into strategies and outcomes. Just as a recap, some of the things that imagine-it phase included, we had meetings on the go, wherever people were, we tried to be. There were some great IK reads activities. We had surveys online. We had surveys in parks. We had surveys wherever there were people, and obviously multiple community road shows. Anyone who is willing and able, we had staff that were presenting on this process. In terms of plan it meetings, we had five public meetings across the city, tried to get as many people as possible to come out. We had small group discussions, really trying to hone in on goals and outcomes that people felt that we needed to explore over the next 10 years, as well as having some online surveys for people to participate. We also had focus groups, really trying to identify community experts that we could engage deeply with on a topic, and bringing in our staff who also share a passion for that particular topic, and really kind of seeing how we can start to put a framework together. Throughout this whole process, we try to listen, we try to report back out, ask the question, did we get it right? What's missing? Go back in and back out again until we can get this right. So here's where we are so far. Over 4,300 community contacts. We're really just getting started when we look at all of the work that's to follow for our master plan process. We are hoping to well surpass certainly our Imagine Kalamazoo 2025 goal and hopefully hit a new bar for us to hit for plans to come. This is a framework we use to help guide our engagement, and I want you to focus on that. Middle of this framework is really where the magic happens. We feel if we can balance impactful data with our staff experiences and kind of looking at what people are doing across the country and world, blending that with our community voices, our community needs, expectations, that middle spot's where we want to be. We want to be able to understand what is the community looking for us to do together? How can we rely on data to help us focus, help us target, help us measure? And then how do we also benefit from some of the great things that are happening outside of city? How do we bring it into Kalamazoo, Kalamazoo-ify it, and turn it into our vision plan? Excuse me. So a couple of things that I want to hone in on that we've done differently, and I think that is really for 2035, we have tried to be much more intentional with engaging our city staff. Certainly, they were involved with 2025. We felt it was very important, if we're to be successful in implementing the community vision, we have to have deep ownership and a deep value that staff bring to their work to get the job done. So certainly, we spent some time trying to understand community vision, but we've also spent some time with our staff to really get at what is our organizational purpose? Why are we doing what we're doing? What are the values that we need to lean into to operationalize that purpose? Now, all of this, the purpose, the values, it's oriented to making sure that community vision can happen. And then what are our collective guiding principles and goals that is really going to set our direction for the next 10 years? So this is the working vision statement for the moment. In 2035, all Kalamazoo neighborhoods are supported by sustainable, responsive, and accessible services that lift people up and bring our community together at every stage of life. This is a list of guiding principles, and I want to really emphasize that these principles, diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility, academic mobility, sustainability, operational excellence, continuous engagement, they're so critical that they need to weave through everything that we do. You might recall in 2025, we had a strength through diversity, and we had a shared prosperity, and those are critical, but you can't isolate that just to one goal area. We want to make sure these guiding principles are at the top of the work that we do, and we look to hit triple, quadruple bottom lines in the work that we do trying to weave through these guiding principles. The organizational purpose, why we do what we do, is to provide essential resources, services, and exceptional customer service to ensure the well-being of our residents and the sustainable growth of our city. Trying to give an understanding of why do we want our staff to come to work every day? What are we working towards? It's about a shared vision, and it's about making sure that we can act on that shared vision. With that comes trust, with that comes things we can celebrate together. We also wanted to spend some time understanding our values. How do we operationalize that purpose? It can be great to put something up on a poster. We want people to understand what it means to live by these values. We heard from our staff the importance of integrity, learning, inclusion, customer service, accountability, teamwork, and safety. We're still kind of working through to figure out how to best embody. We don't want this to just be words on a piece of paper, making sure that everyone understands what does it mean to live into these values and do this work together. Now going to pass it off to Rebecca, and she is going to talk about the strategic vision framework.
Thanks, Laura. So all of the work that Laura just talked about kind of became how it comes through the filter. So now that we're looking at what's the document going to be, and how are we going to set up that Phase 3 work that we're doing for design it up for success? What are we going to look like? So our first part starts with what is a happy, healthy city? This is the book read that we did with the community, and we had so many wonderful participate, so much wonderful participation in that, and out of that came this list of ingredients. We asked through surveys and through in-person participation, what does it mean to be a happy and healthy city? And many of those pieces are how we ended up with our guiding principles. Because, again, when we did Imagine Kalamazoo 2025, no other master plan before that had ever imagined strength through diversity. We had never imagined shared prosperity. We didn't have economic mobility in those spaces. And so now that we've had some lessons learned from how to implement Imagine Kalamazoo 2025, we know that in Imagine Kalamazoo 2035, that these are like the non-negotiables. And the more goals that these hit become that triple bottom line that Laura talked about. We want them to be infused in every single goal in the way that it expresses itself the best. So we're committed to DEIA, economic mobility, sustainability, operational excellence, and continuous engagement. Now, the goals that are coming out of the community right now are arts, culture, and placemaking, community trust and safety, economic vitality, the environment, housing, transportation, and youth and family. I'll show you kind of how this all works together. So above, you have the guiding principles, and below, you have the goals and the way that they are being expressed through the community's dialogue. So when they talk about arts, culture, and placemaking, the way that that's being expressed is to have vibrant public spaces, arts, and culture that create belonging and vitality, making Kalamazoo a regional destination. All of our placemaking, the mural festival that was last week, these really important moments that are in every single neighborhood, create Kalamazoo as such an exciting place to be. Community trust and safety means that everyone is safe and supported by the services they depend on and the community around them. Really talks about the multitude of services that the city provides that include safety, code enforcement, KDPS, of course, lead water line replacement. We have many ways that we touch safety in every department. A thriving business ecosystem that advances economic growth, equitable community wealth building, this is how economic vitality becomes expressed, especially when you feel and see that economic mobility piece coming in there, DEIA, sustainability, you're going to start to feel how those fingerprints of those guiding principles really work through each of the goals. Environment, a healthy environment sustains community well-being today and for generations to come. Accessible and affordable housing for all that strengthens families, neighborhoods, and community life. Safe and connected travel supports year-round and equitable mobility for all travelers, transportation, and all youth and families have what they need to be healthy, to grow, and to succeed. Something that's new is really having a housing goal. Housing was not a standalone goal on its own last time. It was woven through complete neighborhoods. It was woven through shared prosperity. It was woven through economic vitality. But because of the way that it has been risen up through our community dialogue, we feel like it is a standalone goal for these next 10 years for our community. The next slides really talk about the focus areas that are coming out underneath the goals. I won't read all of these to you. I'll let you peruse those, because again, it's draft language right now, but each of these slides are how we're going to go out to the community in our Phase 3 into design it. So when we look at activate civic and natural places with accessible, inclusive recreation, and arts and culture, is what we've heard from the community, and then we'll dive in, what does that mean? What kind of program would we put behind that? What kind of infrastructure do we need to make that come to fruition? This gets back to our goals, outcomes, strategies, measures, the way that we look at the implementation for these, and so we'll really be working on those strategies and measures with our community in the design it phase. Because how we activate those civic and natural places in Edison, how we activate them on the north side, how we activate them in Oakwood, each of those neighborhoods, it's going to feel a little different. They're going to bring something else to the table. They're going to say, this is what it looks like for us. And so that's why it's so important that we do those great neighborhood meetings and let them show us how these get expressed specifically in their neighborhoods. So each one of these goals has these focus areas that we'll be bringing to the table. And of course, we'll always ask, is there anything that we missed? Is there anything that we need to add? Is this what you expected to come out of? Again, here's community trust and safety, economic vitality, environment. And I do want to call your attention to, yes, we have sustainability in the guiding principles, and we have environment as a goal, but if you think about sustainability as a principle, there are many aspects of every goal that can have a sustainable component to them, whether that's housing, transportation, youth and family. You can think about how it expresses itself in different goals, but also having the environment as a natural place. Many of our assets and our infrastructure, how we think about the river, our water usage, needs to be expressed separately as an environmental goal. So that's why this is really a twofold piece, that we have sustainability and the environment expressing itself in this way. And housing, of course. Transportation. And our youth and family goal. So in our next slide, I'm going to hand it back to Laura so that she can really talk about how we're aligning Imagine Kalamazoo 2035 this time versus how we did it in Imagine Kalamazoo 2025.
Thank you. So we talked about the engagement process and the way in which we're trying to convene a lot of different elements to get us to that vision. I think the piece of it is, we want to use this robust engagement process to not only create our strategic vision, but also to help us get to our master plan, also to help inform our citywide area plans, our neighborhood plans. What I mentioned earlier, where we're trying to be more intentional about staff engagement, we recognize we need to have better infrastructure, a better foundation inside the organization to make sure the work gets done, to make sure we're tracking it, we're oriented toward results, and we have accountability to the community for the results that we're collectively bringing together. So the government strategy document, or GSD, Get Stuff Done, is our internal master plan. This is the strategies and measures that we know we need to have internally to be able to get those goals and outcomes from our community and make sure that they happen. We see the GSD helping to inform department strategies, where each department is clear how they see their work in our community vision, down to the staff level. We had some of this work happening in 2025, but it wasn't foundational. It wasn't structured. It relied on a lot of passionate people trying to run around doing a lot of work, and we're trying to figure out how to take that passion and channel it, but not make it as difficult to carry such a heavy load. So we really see this internal strategic vision as an opportunity for greater alignment and to continually understand from our staff. If we're asking you to join us in implementing this vision, what are the supports that you need? What's the training that you need? What are the resources? What are the tools? We want to make sure that as we're asking for them to do more, we're willing to provide the structure and the support to make sure that we're setting up our staff for success as well as setting up our community for success with this plan implementation. So in terms of next steps, as I mentioned, we're really diving into the strategic vision framework right now. We've got draft language. We really want to make sure that we're having community conversations, continually rechecking our, do we hear you right? What are we missing? We see ourselves coming back to you in December to really open up a public comment period with a draft document. We anticipate more community conversations, community meetings, to say, here's our strategic vision draft, how are we feeling about this? And that allows us to then move into the next step, which is really the master plan. So if this goes well, if we feel like we're getting good feedback, we would anticipate being able to bring the draft to you all for consideration in January. One of the timelines we're keeping in mind is that the city commission will have its annual retreat to give direction on the 2027 budget. We'd like to be able to have a finalized strategic vision to say, we understand from our community what are the most critical goals and outcomes that we need to be working on, and let that work that's been done with over, hopefully, 8,000 community voices, let that help us determine what's the most important thing for us to be working on in 2027. Meanwhile, as we're wrapping up the strategic vision, the master plan is going to be taking off, and there'll be a whole nother round of engagement, looking to get far more localized, getting into neighborhoods, helping people understand, it's one thing to say I care about housing. What does that mean for the Edison neighborhood? What does that mean for Millwood? We want to understand that we go from a 30,000-foot strategic vision level down to a 5-foot. What happens on my street? Does this work for me? Online activities, some more IK reads, trying to engage people, and not only what we want for Kalamazoo, what can we learn from other people doing similar work? And then keep on with the focus groups, linking up with our community experts, with our staff that are passionate about these topics, diving into strategies, diving into measures. Here's that timeline again, just to give you a sense of where we'll be back before you all. Certainly, we'll continue to put a lot of information out to the community about how they can get involved, how they can make sure that their voice is included, and we'll continue to provide you updates as well. With that, we are open to questions, comments, reflections, and anything else you'd like to share with us this evening.
Thank you so much, COO Lamb and Assistant City Manager. I got that right, right?
Deputy. I'm sorry. Hard to keep track of us.
Okay. Kick, appreciate all your efforts on this. It's impressive. Questions, reflections, commissioners? Mr. Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, COO Lamb and DCM Kick. I just want to say that I'm excited that we've actually made housing as its own component within the master plan, and I think that's something that we definitely need. And, you know, I love neighborhood plans, so speaking of neighborhood plans, we have 11. How many more neighborhood plans do we need to actually come online to have them complete? Do you know?
So the approach has been, we want to be there to support neighborhoods that are ready for plans. So we've never stopped the work, even though we're finishing up 2025, moving into 2035. As groups are coming together, and you know this well from Westnatch Hill, we can start that process now, but we'll be looking for neighborhood plans to align with the new 2035 vision.
So do you know how many that we still need to come online? How many neighborhoods are still out there that might need a little push as we start to create more for the IK 2035?
So we identify the notion of 22 neighborhood boundaries, but we know that not every neighborhood boundary has an active group, so I'm not intentionally trying to elude your question. But the goal is for neighborhoods that are organized and want to have a plan, we want to be there to support. I would love to see us getting to 15, 16, but one, we don't want to push a plan on a neighborhood that's not ready. We want to make sure that first and foremost, we're building with resident leaders, building connectivity, building connections, and if the logical next step is we want to get organized, we want to get focused, we'd like to do that. Meanwhile, we have neighborhoods that have been through the planning process, and now they're coming to us saying, we'd like to update. So we're going to have to keep in mind the desire for new neighborhoods to have plans, as well as being responsive to existing neighborhoods who are now ready to kind of do a refresh.
Thank you for that, and when you talk about bringing some of the neighborhoods on plan or online when they are ready, would that be something? I know we have a great gentleman right now that's kind of stepped up and, you know, taken on that role as working with the neighborhoods and getting their plans together. Do you have any inclination, or will you speak with the CPED department to see if that individual might need a little extra help as we have more neighborhoods that want to become active and want to create their plans to work within the IK 2035?
So we do, we did have our new neighborhood activator, C. Mall, come on board, just starting last week, if I'm not mistaken. So certainly, CPED is trying to work on having this individual meet with as many people as possible. It's going to be a process, but I know having met with C., they are very enthusiastic about the work and looking to get into the neighborhoods and provide its support as much as possible. Thank you.
Commission, I'm going to ask if everyone's okay with this. Western president is here in the chambers with us. Do we mind putting off our reflections here for a moment and coming back to this? Will that work for everybody? Alright, thank you so much. Well, we'll ask you forward later on. So at this time, I'd like to welcome President of Western Michigan University, Russell Cavalluna. I hope I said that right, and I see you've got a support team with you here this evening as well. So it's a pleasure to have you with us. Thank you so much for coming down to see us here at the city commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Good to be before you. My name's Russ Cavalluna. I'm here for several reasons, but the one I'm most proud of is I'm a graduate of Western Michigan University, as are my parents and many of my family members, and it was, one of my first important things to do was come before you. I used to be a member of your community, a constituent. I lived in Kalamazoo while I was at Western, and now I'm back in a leadership role at the best university in the entire country, so I'm proud to be before you, one of the best city commissions in the entire country. I don't have any big asks of you, except to extend my I don't have any big asks of you, except to extend my hand and say I'm a person who is interested in maintaining partnership with you all that I know has existed for decades, frankly, centuries. We've been around 122 years, and just in the last several years, we have continued to be great partners. One of the major things we need and always can count on from you all is the infrastructure that this city provides for the public education, that our institution, and frankly, where my children attend the Kalamazoo Public Schools. But we've also been partners, and will continue to be partners, on some things I know you find joy, and I hope that you'll continue to enjoy with me. I believe it's the 27th of this month that we'll have Comm University, which is a tradition going on 30 years. We also partner with you all on things that make our community better that I know you've taken time and spent some of your political capital and real capital to deliver. One example of that is the Downtown Kalamazoo Economic Vitality Study, where a lot of our undergraduate students are helping you all evaluate what we can and should do to help the economic vitality of our town. We've also been proud to be your partner since 2011 for the Kalamazoo Literacy Council, which, as you know, is something that our students support your city services in helping the important project of adult literacy. It's, I should go without saying that our partnership is one that's symbiotic. When Western is healthy, Kalamazoo is healthy. And when Kalamazoo is healthy, Western is healthy. And so I hope that you know that as the 10th president of an institution that's been around for 122 years, I'll continue to ask for your partnership and hope to be a good partner to you all in your public service. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and I do want you to know that anytime that the university can be of aid to you in anything, please reach out directly to me. It'd be a point of pride to represent Western in helping you in your public service. I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor. And I do apologize for taking you off of your schedule, I appreciate very much. And I am a recovering lawyer, so it's hard for me to stop talking, but I'm going to prove I can do it right now.
I appreciate it. Thanks so much for coming down. You did not mention something that's happening on October 11th. I believe that's homecoming, is that correct?
October 11th is homecoming, and you're, of course, welcome to come to see us then. Also, there'll be several football games this season, and I'd enjoy having you. In fact, we're playing Toledo just this weekend. They're apparently a pretty good team, and so are we. So yes, any of the football games you're interested in seeing, let me know.
Thank you so much. Questions, Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Cooney.
President, congratulations for being, we're delighted you're here. I have a couple of things. One is, I want to, I thank you for entering into a dialogue with Dr. Said about what role that Western could play in ending the slaughter in Gaza. Secondly, I just retired after 48 years of wonderful service at Western, and I've been a city commissioner for 26 years. So I think I have pretty good insight into both areas. And I very much appreciate all that Western is doing in the community. But I'm convinced that there is a lot more that we could do, and especially in helping our students achieve, get to the promise and succeed in the promise. I know from my experience teaching in the School of Social Work, how much our students get out of working in the community. But I think from the School of Social Work, from the Education Department, from the Athletic Department, and so many others, we're already doing great things, but there is so much more that we could do. And I hope that you will pursue that partnership with the city and the people, especially to working with the promise.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Cooney. I will say, by my count, and I didn't go to Western for math, so check me, but 66 years of public service at our institution and in your institution, you do have a rather seasoned view of what community service is. And I'm happy to take any recommendations you have about getting students more involved in both community service, but also internships that are serving, maybe not even public service, but the businesses or nonprofits around in this community. So I just got back to Kalamazoo. I was born in Kalamazoo, a little more than 45 years ago. I just got back to Kalamazoo for my fourth stint here, and I could use your help for where you think we could get our students in more and leverage what we have, which is young people who are caring about our institution and our county.
Mr. Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, President Cavalluna, glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Yes, for an ask. One thing that I would ask is that Western continues to work closely with the City Commission, especially with Vice Mayor. And Vice Mayor, I know, you know, this is due to your heart and our hearts, being an education city, is maybe working to bring back within our Committee of the Holes, some of the students within Western to give an update of what's going on and what they're hearing and what they're feeling and what they're thinking about the city. So I think that would be something, as you go forward, to hopefully, again, work closely with Vice Mayor to bring that back to the city of Kalamazoo. Because I believe at one time, we used to do those things like that, and I know that we had asked, you know, if we had any cow ideas and thoughts like that. And I think that that would be something great, not only for Western, but all of the educational institutions that we have here within the city. So, welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. I'm happy to oblige that. In fact, I've got some teammates here that can help me reach out. I do need to get up to speed on how the Committee of the Whole works for this commission, but if you'd like voices from the students. We're proud of our students, but we're also proud of our student leaders who might serve, in fact, I know will serve what you're asking, which is feedback from students, because I think you're right. Listening to some talking head at the podium here is useful, but not as useful as hearing from student leaders. And I'll do all I can to send student leaders, and maybe I'll come with them to your Committee of the Whole.
Mr. Prado.
President Cavalluna, thanks for being here. I'm a proud Bronco myself, and really appreciate the engagement that you're doing to start your tenure. I think that speaks volumes of your leadership, and I think it's critically important to just be out and about in the community and discover the needs. You know, a couple of just things you asked for, you know, what are the things that we're thinking about? To echo, you know, what Don says, it's remarkable. Yeah, I didn't realize it was 48 years for Don at Western. But you meet almost anybody in social work who stayed in the profession here in Kalamazoo. They have some connection to that man over there. And that really speaks to him, but also, I know, one thing I know about Don is he tries to find every opportunity to push those students out into the community, get them involved in internships or volunteer opportunities, and that makes a difference. And that student immersion component of it is so critically important. I remember when I was a student leader at Western's campus, I would often think when I'm walking around on a peak day, like a Tuesday or Thursday, and you think of the volume of thousands of minds that are learning and growing and thinking on that one bubble of this community. And there are so many opportunities where those brilliant minds, whether it be faculty or students or graduate assistants, to take that knowledge and plug it into the greatest needs that we have in this community. And we have a lot of them still. We've got so many great things happening, but we have so many challenges that they can help us address. And I just hope we can make it such a seamless segue where students, when you come to Western, it just becomes like an automatic assumption that you're not just a Western student, but you are a resident of the city of Kalamazoo. You are plugged in, we want you here for life, to help be a part of that. I just think that's so critically important, and it can look in so many different ways, you know, whether it's being a part of a research project in the community or being mentors. We desperately have organizations that need mentorship for young people. We need it all. And there's just so much great talent there that we can bring out into the community. And the other part of it as well is just, you know, from the visitor perspective. We've had Jane Gosch here a number of times from Discover Kalamazoo. And if you look at the peak days on their Placer AI data with phones, it is Broncos, Broncos bring it in. You know, whether it be Homecoming or Comm University, those, it is a major driver for this community. And so that partnership is so invaluable. And I know we're already investing so much in that, but it's just so critically important to remember that that's such a big role that you all play for our success in that as well. But I just also want you to know that this commission has been strongly committed to the success of campus. You know, when we started here even just six years ago, I remember how much of a dream it was to have a conduit between campus and downtown. I mean, you can actually safely get up Stadium Drive now and cross it easier and more safely. We didn't have sidewalks along Howard. We prevented students, where we had accidents and deaths along West Michigan Avenue off of campus, where students help us envision strategies to help prevent students from running across and getting hit by traffic or, you know, getting harmed on winters when things aren't plowed. And so this commission is really committed to the success of Western, and we continue to try to find ways to support that and support you and your team to make Western one of the most attractive universities, if not the most, in the country.
Well, it's the most, not if not the most, it is the most.
That's what I like to hear. I was leaving that on you to say.
I just echo what you have to say. We have human capital, we have real dollars capital, and then we have the opportunity to collaborate to make the entire community better. And you will have my commitment to invest those. And from 25 years ago when I was here, getting to downtown is better. And it's apparently as a result of your foresight, so thank you.
We've got a lot to go, but we're getting there.
Yeah, there's going to be a big place that they're going to need to get to back and forth very soon.
Vice Mayor, yes?
Sure. President Cavalluna, thank you for being here, and thank you for saying yes to Western. Commissioner Decker is right. I thoroughly believe that this is an education city. I think we should climb it. I was going to talk about it a little bit later tonight in my Commissioner comments, but I'll say a few things now. I believe that community is a verb. I think that everyone needs to be involved. I think that everyone, whether you're a resident here, whether you're a student here, whether you're visiting or you live here, that you have a responsibility, communities to have charge of together. You have a responsibility, each one teach one, everyone. Be to, whether you're helping, having an intern in, or whether you're just engaging students when they're downtown, or going to campus to theater productions or music productions or athletic contests, that we show the community and we show the Western community that we support them as well. I think that it's important that our community work with you to recruit and retain students at Western Michigan University. As we all know, the landscape is waxing, waning, waning with students coming out of matriculating, out of high school into colleges. And they have a choice of where they spend their lives and their dollars, and we want them here in Kalamazoo. And so how does our community make the landscape better? And I'm just going to go back to the strategic vision draft here, if that's what it is. If we are able to realize what we're laying out in our draft, students can't help but notice, people can't help but notice, that Kalamazoo is the place to be and the place to learn and the place to grow. And then the place to stay and raise a family. My son is a proud Bronco alum. And when he graduated, he had a choice, he could go anywhere. And he said, Mom, why would I leave Kalamazoo? And I said, you don't need to, you really don't need to. We got it all here. So, and I was just recently talking to a new Parks and Rec employee from, and she's like, I know, I was like two weeks graduated and I just, I was just hired. And I love it here. We didn't, her and her group of friends all chose to stay here in Kalamazoo. So there's something that we are beginning to do and create that symbiosis that you talk about, that we're working together towards something much greater than ourselves, whether it's the city, or whether it's the universities, or the colleges, or the public institutions, the healthcare institutions. We're all working together for the greater good of all of us who live here in Kalamazoo. So I'm just grateful for you being here, and I'm grateful for you saying yes to my first institution, University of Michigan, and then my second institution, Western Michigan University, meeting up in Germany next year. So, gosh, I'm going to save my pennies and see if I can't find my way to Germany. But that would be awesome as a coach and as an athlete, I think, that we learn through education, that sport can be a very valuable way of delivering and receiving education. And like you said, like you alluded to, there will be a place here, right downtown, where that education is going to be on display. I'm really so grateful to you for being here and for being so enthusiastic about this city and this university. God bless you, sir.
Go Broncos.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Anything else, Commissioners, at this point? It's a pleasure to see you. Thank you so much for coming down. And we should probably make some sort of arrangements where we could come up ourselves to a board meeting at some point, just to make sure that it's a two-way relationship. So thanks again. Thank you for bringing your esteemed guests with you here, and have a pleasant evening.
Thank you. Godspeed to you and your public service, and go Broncos.
All right, COO Lam, we're back to it. So we were in the process of reflecting. Commissioner Decker had kicked us off on that. Other thoughts, Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Wilson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, COO Lam. DCM Kick, I don't know if she's in here, but thank you.
She did have to go. I should be able to fill the questions, but if there's details I can't offer you, I'm happy to follow up afterwards.
All right. Well, one of the things I love to see is that SPK has kind of woven into each guiding principle and strategic goal. I was just wondering if you guys anticipate any required organizational or infrastructure changes to support that? And I know right now Kevin's doing a great job with SPK for the organization, but I'm just wondering if that will require more of anything to support.
Certainly. And I think we want to make sure we stay true to shared prosperity and that phrasing, also recognizing that there's definitely a movement around economic mobility. And I think that we want to look at the ways in which we can understand shared prosperity and how it originated for the city, and how that manifests in economic mobility. So having that as a guiding principle, we want to make sure, I just had this conversation with Kevin last week. I said to Kevin, you don't have to stay in one goal lane. You get to play in all the sandboxes, because the work that you do through shared prosperity, economic mobility, helping people move up, it needs to affect every single goal that we do. I also think the way that Antonio Mitchell and Community Planning and Economic Development are thinking about their economic development team and their strategy is recognizing it's not economic development over here and economic mobility over here. It has to be one and the same. When we say our community needs to thrive, it should be understood thrive for everyone. Everyone needs to thrive. So I think, to answer your question, certainly want to make sure Kevin feels supported in his work. And what I see leadership at Community Planning and Development doing is really making sure that everyone carries that as a mission, as a North Star, and that whether we're talking about housing, whether we're talking about supporting small business, we're doing it in a way that thinks about how can we have everybody lifted up by this work.
Thank you. Secondly, I love the community engagement that we've seen, over 4,300 points of contact. I was just wondering if we received any feedback from the community about our strategies that we've implored so far for that engagement?
So part of what we try to do in counting, those are all of the contacts that have helped us get to the language we have right now. I think the key is, it's one thing to talk concepts, it's another thing to see goals on paper. So this next round is going to be critical. When we have those focus groups that helped us create these outcomes and goals, we need to go back out, show the language, and say, did we hear you right? So the feedback has been constant. We try to make sure that it's not an asked and answered move on. It's, hey, we gathered, I'll give you an example. With arts and culture, there was a focus group, and we got some feedback from some leaders afterwards saying, you know, we had some great discussion, I'm not sure if we had all of the voices in the room. Can we do a follow-up conversation? And that really was, you know, absolutely, let's do that. And there's some language that we're moving around, making sure that that inclusive feeling of Kalamazoo is promptly recognized, and that we want to make sure that Kalamazoo is and is known as a regional destination. Those two can go hand in hand. We want to be known as a welcoming destination. So we really want to make sure there's an ongoing opportunity for engagement, and a lot of those contacts have been people coming through and giving us feedback on what we've already heard and kind of shared back out.
Thanks. I really appreciate the phase where you're going back and making sure that we did hear them correctly. I think that's very important, so thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Other reflections? Vice Mayor, yes?
Sure. Thank you, Laura and Rebecca, for the presentation. Having participated in several levels of this, it's nice to see it all congeal. You said a word that I'd like for you to define and maybe give an example of, you said, we will Kalamazoo-ify it. And when you were talking about data and we were looking at best practices, staff expertise, community voices, and impactful data, and that the magic happens right there in the middle, right? middle, right? And you said, well, we'll bring in this data, or we'll bring in the best practice, and we'll Kalamazoo-ify it. Can you talk a little bit about what you meant by that?
Sure. I think that it's important that we do keep our eyes open to what is being done in the country and across the world. When we're struggling with a problem, let's not assume that we're the only one who's ever experienced this problem. So it's important we keep our eyes open, but not to assume that's something that works phenomenally in Baltimore, Maryland. We can take a program, pluck it out of Baltimore, shove it right in Kalamazoo, assume it's going to work. So eyes open to experiences outside the city, but let's be really intentional about what it takes to take a model from someplace else and have it work with the people and the experiences here in Kalamazoo. I gathered at the last partners meeting, I'm not sure if you attended that, that was also something that came up as Christina Anderson, our city planner, was kind of walking through the framework. It was a push to say, we like the words, but we're not sure if we're feeling Kalamazoo in it yet. What is uniquely us? And so I think, I try to keep that Kalamazoo-ify in my head, not to keep me from looking outside of our boundaries and what we can learn, but to be understanding that you have to know your community and know a model and figure out how can you bring the two together. And so that's kind of a Kalamazoo-ify, a quick way to try to encompass that that we're trying to do. Thank you. I know that we've looked at models for gun violence, national models for gun violence, national models of housing, dealing with the unhoused crisis and poverty. So I know that we're looking at those, but I like the idea of plugging them into Kalamazoo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. Commissioner Cooney.
It's very impressive that you've done so much to get the community involved. And I just, there's two things. First of all, you have a lot, an enormous amount of expertise, yourself and your staff and the people in the community. And you continue to improve that by looking at what's going on around the nation. And that's great, I'm so glad. And then the second piece is, as you recognize, that people are the experts in their own lives. So it's merging those two things that are going to get us forward, and you're doing that, and that's great. And I think that that's the way we got to do it. I think it's easy to lose the part about your expertise. No, that's important. You have something to say. That's your job, that's what you know from your experience, that's what you're learning about, and that's critical. We have to marry that with the people's knowledge of what's going on in their own lives, and that's how we'll succeed.
Pause in a minute here, it looks like there's notes being taken here based on those comments. Y'all set?
I'm good, thank you.
Other reflections, commissioners, at this time? Yeah, Commissioner Prado.
Laura, I feel like my head's going to explode, but in the best way possible.
Okay.
You know, because this is the first time we're seeing this on paper and whatnot, and obviously it'll take me a lot of time to digest, but first initial impressions are just, it's really exciting, right? What I see here is what you're doing is creating really a community that's leading in a post-COVID world, you know? And just a couple of things that kind of come to mind, and, you know, again, these are just thoughts that are just popping in my mind as I was trying to jot down things as quickly as possible. But I really like the component about arts and culture, but you specifically said it as a driver for neighborhoods. And I really love that spirit of like drivers for neighborhoods, of like, you know, leaning into what makes each neighborhood special and thrive, so that if you live in a separate neighborhood, you want to go visit that other neighborhood, because there are certain like special things there that make it unique and special to itself and for the residents that thrive there. You talked about public spaces. I can't stress this enough, I know there's a number of us up here who have young kids or grandkids. And I just think it's so critically important to create those public spaces that families and kids see themselves in. If we want to be a sustainable community, which is one of those core values, I think it's so incredibly important that kids and families fall in love with our community right now, you know, where they're at as kids, because then they'll want to spend their life here. And I think that's true of all different ages as well, but especially young kids and families, there's so many opportunities to activate that for them. Something that just really resonates and just sticks in my head that is a driver, and I don't know a way to incorporate this, but I think we need to be digging deeper teeth to be more bold about this. I've spoken to too many parents who say that they don't let their kids go outside and play in their own backyard or in their own neighborhood, because they don't feel like their kids are safe. That cannot be the case anymore. Every single kid in this neighborhood has a right to go play in their street and play in their backyard and feel safe. Their mom and dad, their parent and their life should not worry about them going outside to do what all kids should be doing. And there has to be tantamount in that safety component, that we can build a community that can do that. From an economic vitality perspective, I love the economic mobility priority, and it really aligns with our economic development plans and what I've seen us do more of in the last five years than we've ever done. One of the things that I've heard from so many people in the business community is this desire that if, say if a mom and pop starts a chain and they've got four different communities that they're in, you know, let's be the best community that supports them in the most entrepreneurial and, you know, business, when I say business friendly, I mean it from like the startup, small business supports. So that if somebody has a dream or wants to grow, we as a community can help them do that. And they say that no one does it better than the city of Kalamazoo. One of the things that I saw about the preserving natural spaces is using the word activate those natural spaces, because we have all these amazing natural assets, you know, from creeks to rivers, and people are just starting to kind of dip their toes in them and to use them, but I think there's so many more opportunities to leverage those. And the other one too, that is a big one, but I think we can do it, is connecting the trail from Portage to downtown Kalamazoo. You know, right now, the Blanch Hall Reserve is kind of this area where there's a dead end, where things don't connect, but we have an opportunity to connect and do that. And then the other part of it too is just that, you know, we talked about the youth and family. You know, I think it should be an aspirational component that every young person in this community, if they have a desire and want to find some positive outlet to engage and plug in, that we can provide that as a community. And I believe we can do that. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Prado. Vice Mayor Hess.
Sure. You reminded me, Commissioner Prado, of the quote by Maya Angelou, people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, people will never forget how you made them feel. And so how is Kalamazoo being welcoming, being helpful to children? How do they make them feel? I remember I had my grandson here at Bronson Park, and it was a concert or something, and then he goes, I thought you said we were going to the park. And there were no swings, there were no slides, there was nothing to play on, and for him, it wasn't a park. Now we're able to take him across the street to that park, and he's, oh, okay, this is a park. But they will never forget how you made them feel. Did we make them feel welcome? Did we make them feel safe? Were we kind as a city? And this is one of the biggest things that I take out of all of this process, is the invitation to folks around the city to engage with this process, and that we get out of it exactly what we put into it and how we feel about that, so that others can be made to feel included. So, thank you so much, Laura.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. Other reflections, commissioners, at this time? All right, thank you so much. Just a reminder for anyone who's watching, and also just for all of us, is that we're not at the end of this, we're in the middle of this. If you look back at your chart, I'm not even quite sure we're to 50% yet, if I'm right about that, so on the timeline. So this is a process, as is life. So there's not a goal, we're just going to hit, and that's the end. This in itself is in a process. We will be seeing this again, and then once we begin to implement it, it will also be a process, as we're giving ourselves another 10 years. This is the 2035 plan after all. So, any closing remarks you'd like to make, COO Lam?
Just want to thank you all for your thoughtful feedback tonight. Certainly want to thank the staff who have been involved in doing all these conversations, and the community expertise, the community leaders that have come out. We can't hit these numbers if we don't have networks of community leaders that are willing to be engaged. We learned that early on, that if we can throw a party and have 100 people come, if we have 20 leaders throw 20 parties, we exponentially increased our network, and that's the numbers that you're seeing. So I get to be the fortunate one to stand here and talk about the results of this conversation. But we have really, really hardworking community leaders and staff that are out there making sure the conversation's being had, and that we're prepared to do meaningful action as a result. So thank you all for the opportunity and look forward to more great conversations to come.
Commissioner Prado.
Mr. Mayor, I thought of one other thing as well for possible engagement points. We've been on the City Manager Search Committee, and I mean, just in the surveying alone, we had like 415 responses. And I think there might be some, you know, bits and pieces we might be able to garner that could apply to the plan, planning process as well as engagement points.
Yep, I can have staff look at that, thank you.
Yeah.
Nice boost to the numbers there. Yes, good, thank you. Anything else then for, thank you once again for being here, I appreciate that. Now on our agenda, we are down to commissioner comments. Just a reminder for anyone that's watching our meeting here is that our business meeting will start in about an hour, there'll be an opportunity for commissioner comments at that time as well. Anyone who on the commission wants to make a comment for this meeting? Yes, Vice Mayor Hess.
Briefly. So I'm considering, I'm considering your thought, Commissioner Decker, about a committee of the whole with them, but why, I believe that we should invite all the student commissions from all the institutions to come and do a public comment update upon what's going on in their community every single time. I'd love to hear from the students about what's going on and keep that on top of our minds, keep it in the city conversation as well. So that's, I would love to have them all invited to public comment.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. That is exactly what I thought too. I just, making it pertain to our nice president of Western here, but yes, all of the universities.
Any other commissioner comments? All right then, we'll be reconvening here in, I guess, a little under an hour for our regular business meeting, and this meeting is adjourned. We have three proclamations.